All right. Good morning. Welcome to the House Election Law Subcommittee on Voter Registration and Impacts of Non-Resident Voting. Let's stand for the pledge, and I'll lead it this morning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will not ask anyone to sing the National Anthem this morning, so. So. All right. So, so let me just read the mission statement to remind everybody of the purpose of the Subcommittee. The mission statement is as follows: At the direction of the Chairman of the Election Law Committee, this bipartisan Subcommittee is tasked with evaluating, consolidating, and reconciling various 2025 House bills concerning voter registration and the impacts of non-resident voting. Accordingly, the Subcommittee will review the proposed legislation with attention to constitutionality, any necessary alignment with federal election law, and legal precedents. The Subcommittee will consider historical context and opportunities to clarify current regulations. The Subcommittee will issue a report to summarize its findings, conclusions, and recommendations. So, basically, there are two tasks or activities that we're going to cover this morning, just a very brief discussion on the report, and then we will begin the process of voting on the bills that remain before the Subcommittee. There are eight bills that were identified in the public notice, and we will go through those. I hope to be done by 9:30, at least for the meeting part, so. With regard to the report, the Subcommittee, in total, every member has had an opportunity to review the report. There are still some things that are being drafted, and so we will probably end up issuing it formally on Friday, but the recommendations that we make in the report for these bills will be final today. So, it's really not a big issue, I don't believe. The recommendations are coming out of formal paperwork to the Legislative Assistant, and so that shouldn't be a problem. All right. I want to thank all the members of the Subcommittee for their time and effort to provide the review of the report and all the various attachments, which include the research memos from Mr. Allen, as well as testimony from Daniel Richard, discussion points that were discussed the other day, the last working session that the Subcommittee had, as well as questions that have been presented to the Assistant Attorney General. All right. Are there any questions from the Subcommittee about the report at this moment? Seeing none, I'm, okay, all right. Again, I think it was. I appreciate everybody's prompt review of the report and whatnot, so. All right. Yes, please, comments are good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to thank you for being able to put everything together in the report. I mean, it was very satisfactory, very detailed. I can tell you spent a lot of time. I actually saw your three o'clock note on that, because I was up at three o'clock. I'm thinking, oh, I'm not the only one, but I just, the attention to detail in all the backup is very much appreciated. So, thank you so much for all the time you've dedicated to this.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
I'll just echo exactly what Representative Burnham said, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, more stuff? Oh, this is for, here you go. Yep. No, no, that's okay, no. Yes, because the election, because the full Election Law Committee is going on at 10:00, and we, and all of us probably have amendments or another, we have a lot of paperwork coming in this morning. So, that's okay, nothing wrong with that. So, at this point, I'd like to begin, you know, a semi, again, we're a work, this is a working session, not an executive session, but we will be voting on these bills. And so accordingly, we'll begin. Concerning House Bill 217, relative to absentee ballots, is there a motion?
I move, we make the bill ought to pass.
Is there a second?
Yes, I will second.
All right, thank you. So, the motion is ought to pass. It has been seconded. Is there any discussion on the bill that Representative Lane?
I can't reach my mic. Little short arms, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're going to be voting against this bill on a policy standpoint primarily, but we would also, and I think it's noted in the report, that we also think that to have a better bill, it should be amended to include the voters who are in jail, that the correctional officer or the administrator should be able to verify, and I don't know, it's not really notary, but to affirm what the voter is doing so that that ballot can be counted correctly and accepted. So, I don't like waiting, because that means that there's going to be some more elections that they won't get to vote in, but hopefully, we can fix that next year. Thank you.
Yeah, that, just for clarification, the report did suggest a bipartisan bill next year to amend that. It does say other facility, and similar facilities or something, I forget the exact wording. So, that should certainly not be construed as prohibiting that from any correctional facilities. And as we heard testimony the other day, there's sometimes around 85% that detainees that are, have not been formally charged, so we certainly want to address that. I do, I do think the existing language covers it. I think there could be language to clarify and improve that. I, believe it or not, I ran out of bandwidth to do the amendment, so. And so, again, I suggest that we just take that up as a bipartisan bill next year, or, yeah, next, and next year, and I'm happy to work with, you know, I think all the members of this Subcommittee would like to work together on that, I believe. So, let's take a vote. I'll try and do this in alphabetical order. It's a bit of a challenge here. All right. Let me just also make sure I'm doing the correct.
Welcome to my world.
Yeah, yes, all right. I've already made a mistake, which Robin can shoot me for, but that's okay. Okay, excellent. All right. Okay, so. All right. So, the motion is ought to pass. Representative Burnham?
Yes.
Challenge my ability to do in alphabetical order. Representative Lane?
No.
Representative Newsom?
No.
Representative C?
Yes.
The Chair votes yes, and with that, it passes three to two out of the Subcommittee as ought to pass recommendation for the full committee. All right. All right, we now have before us House Bill 289 regarding domicile qualifications for voting. Is there a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to retain.
All right, Representative Burnham makes a motion to retain. Is there a second? Thank you, Representative Lane. Is there any discussion? I think we're, retain, for anyone who may be watching, retain would allow us to work on the bill over the summer, and when we meet again, and beginning in November, we would act on the bill then with probable amendments, and would then, the House would begin to act on it in full in the January timeframe, in case people were wondering what the retained process is. So, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, we will take a vote. Representative Burnham?
Yes.
Representative Lane?
Yes.
Representative Newsom?
Yes.
Representative C?
Yes.
Representative Wery, or Chairman Wery, votes yes, so that is five to zero. All right, and that was House Bill 289. We now have before us House Bill 323, requiring the presentation of a government-issued photographic means of identification in order to vote. I would, well, we'll get to the discussion. Is there a motion for that?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to retain.
Representative Newsom?
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. All right, so the motion is to retain. And is there any discussion on this bill? All right, one, one thing I would like to note, just, the report does have, the, the structure of the report provides a very, very brief summary of each bill that was before the Subcommittee, and then goes into a majority opinion and a minority opinion on the bills. So, when that report is issued, you can, that, you know, that would be available to review. I think the votes here today reflect the Subcommittee's perspectives, majority and minority perspectives as well, and I think the minority has extended courtesy to the majority on the retained bills as well, and we appreciate that. So, let me just catch up with my paperwork. All right, let's take a vote on retaining House Bill 323. Representative Burnham?
Yes.
Representative Lane?
Yes.
Representative Newsom?
Yes.
Representative C?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes, that is five to zero. All right. We are now looking at House Bill 385. The Chair would like to make a motion of inexpedient to legislate.
I'll second that.
All right. So, the motion is inexpedient to legislate. It's been seconded by Representative C. Is there any discussion on this bill? And I advise that we do have a 10:00 meeting, so.
Well, as the prime sponsor of the bill, I obviously will not be voting for ITL. It is the bill that we brought forward to overturn 1569, which was passed last year, and the Governor later, later in the summer approved it. So, we will be voting against that, because we think having, we think the, the bill is unconstitutional, and we also, 1569, and we think that it's going to cost a lot of money in a very tight budget year for the state to defend it, so.
Thank you for your comments. All right, at this point, we will be taking the, is there any other comments I should ask? Again, I would point people to the report, which does discuss this bill. All right, we will now take a vote on House Bill 385, inexpedient to legislate. Representative Burnham?
Yes.
Representative Lane?
No.
Representative Newsom?
No.
Representative C?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, so that is three to two, recommended out of the Subcommittee as inexpedient to legislate for House Bill 385. All right, we are now on to House Bill 418. That is relative to eligibility for, let me make sure I'm reading the right one, yeah, relative to eligibility for absentee voting. Is there a motion?
Yes, I'd like to move to ITL. This bill, it's one of the ones that we are, I, we are going to do, I think, two of them on ITL for this subject, and retain one of the other ones, so.
Yes, so, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, Representative C seconds the motion. So, this is ITL for House Bill 418, moved by Representative Lane and seconded by Representative C. We will now take the vote on House Bill 418. Representative Burnham?
Yes.
Representative Lane?
Yes.
Representative Newsom?
Yes.
Representative C?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes, so that is five to zero, inexpedient to legislate. We now have before us House Bill, I suppose, I should, that concludes, or whatever, whatever statement that Chairman Berry makes in the full committee, but that closes our session on the House Bill 418. We now move to House Bill 618. This enables election workers, election officials to verify the single use of an out-of-state driver's license presented when a person votes by using the centralized voter registration database. Is there a motion on the bill? Is there a motion on the bill? Representatively, yes.
Thank you. I move to ITL, HB 618. Again, we're consolidating the bill, so that we only end up with one on each subject. So, thank you.
You're welcome, and thank you for that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Representative Burnham seconds. And the Chair catches up with paperwork. All right, the motion is inexpedient to legislate on House Bill 618. Now, call for the roll here. Representative Burnham?
Yes.
Representative Lane?
Yes.
Representative Newsom?
Yes.
Representative C?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes, that is five to zero, inexpedient to legislate on House Bill 618, and that closes out our session on that. We now have before us House Bill 684, preventing the use of student identification cards as a means to obtain a ballot. Is there a motion? Representative Lane?
Yes, thank you. I move to ITL, this bill. Again, we're consolidating the bills that came into us, and focusing on just one on this topic.
Very good. Thank you, Representative Lane. Is there a second on the bill?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, seconded by Representative C. All right, is there any discussion on this bill? Again, I, I think I just want to echo what Representative Lane said, is we are consolidating bills, and this doesn't necessarily speak to the merits or issues that may be with any given bill, but in our effort to consolidate bills, as was stated in our mission statement, the Subcommittee is trying to do that. So, with that, we will now take the vote on House Bill 684. Representative Burnham?
Yes.
Representative Lane?
Yes.
Representative Newsom?
Yes.
Representative C?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. The total vote is five to zero for inexpedient to legislate on House Bill 684. And that closes the session, working session on House Bill 684. And we now have our last bill before us, House Bill 686. This is requiring a voter to provide identification when requesting an absentee ballot. Is there a motion for this?
Yes, I have a motion.
Representative Burnham?
I would like to make a motion to retain.
Representative Burnham makes a motion to retain House Bill 686. Is there a second?
Yes, there is.
Representative Newsom? Thank you very much for the second. Is there any discussion or comments on this bill? I would just note for anyone listening, that, again, we will be working on this bill over the summer, having it ready for November, and for review by the full committee, Election Law Committee in November, and then, at that point, it will then be acted on by the House in the January timeframe. All right, we will now take a vote on House Bill 686. Representative Burnham?
Yes.
Representative Lane?
Yes.
Representative Newsom?
Yes.
Representative C?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes, five to zero is the final tally for House Bill 686. And that concludes all of the review and voting on the remaining eight bills before us. At this point, I just want to thank our Legislative Assistant, Robin Bach, for really keeping on top, or trying to keep me on top of things. She's done an excellent job at keeping me looking as good as I can look. I also want to thank Mr. Allen for his multiple memos, research memos, for good work done on that, and the Subcommittee would also like to thank all of the people who came and testified before the Subcommittee to help us really understand, better understand the issues and concerns that may have been had, as well as the merits to any given bill. So, at that point, at this point, I will go around the members and see if there is any further comments, and with that, we'll, we'll close out the meeting. Representative Burnham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I, after reviewing all of these bills together, my own personal summary is that there are similar concerns, because there's so many bills that were on the same topic. So, it was, I know it was just extra work, but it was, I think, a good, good way to focus through this Subcommittee, and I look forward to trying to pull some of the ones together with the committee to make a better, a better opportunity for a bill as we move forward in the fall. So, thank you all for your time and all of your diligence, Chairman. This was, as exciting as election law can be, this was, this was pretty interesting, so I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Good. Representative C?
I'd like to echo Representative Burnham's comments, and, again, thank you for your excellent organization of how this whole project went.
Thank you. Representative Newsom?
Thank you very much, and, of course, echoing all the thanks that the Chairman has identified as to who to thank, and the other Subcommittee members for the diligence and hard work in listening to this. My experience here as a first-term rep, I wish we had more of this Subcommittee-type work in our full Election Law Committee, to be able to get down to the nitty-gritty on a lot of other bills, instead of just eight out of the 75 that we heard. And the other, the last comment I would make is that part of our Subcommittee charge was to evaluate the impacts of non-resident voting. I wrote that down, I think that's the quote of, from the, from the charge, and I just wanted to say that I don't think we heard anything about there being non-resident voting occurring here. So, I just wanted to make that quick statement there. But, again, thanks to everybody involved in this process, it's been very educational for me throughout, so, thank you.
Thank you, Representative Newsom. Representative Lane?
Thank you. I, I'll just echo everybody's comments, and particularly the one about having more Subcommittees or working groups. I, I think it helps us understand the issues better, and basically understand the other side a little bit better, and, and, you know, the fact that we were able to come to agreement on so many of them, I, in a, in my experience last year, when we worked on the campaign finance one, was identical. You know, the more we talked and worked through it, you can agree on some things, but the other things, you're just not going to agree on, but there's more things we can agree on than that we don't. So, thank you, and you did a great job.
Oh, well, thank you. Well, yes, and I'll just make some final comments before we close out the meeting. I just, again, want to thank all the members of the Subcommittee. I know you put in a lot of extra time to have our five meetings, or something like that, this being the six, actually, and, something like that, and, and I think it has been a very good experience. I, I do echo the comments about the Subcommittee having an ability that perhaps the full committee does not have, to dive into these topics in more detail, to hear more perspectives and more testimony, more extended testimony as well, and I think that really provides a lot of good informational background for the Subcommittee as we consider how to dispense with these bills and, and what might be the best course. And I also want to add on to something that you said, Representative Lane, is what people may not realize is that we do, there is a lot of bipartisan agreement on, you know, somewhere in, in excess of 70% of, of things. I, I would say at least, you know, we, we certainly, majority and minority differ on some policy issues, but there's much that we agree on. And actually, I think a lot of the principles behind it, we actually agree on. It's just we, we differ in, in views of perhaps perspective and implementation. And I think that's, the public should be aware of that, because I, I do think we work hard and try to be very respectful of, of each other's opinions, and accordingly, we, I, I think that allows us to really dig into some of these topics with an open mind to hear new information, and I think that's always valuable. I learned a lot on, during these meetings or working sessions, and I really deeply appreciate that opportunity. It's also given me, I think, a lot of good homework to do over the summer, and, what's that?
We'll be getting together this summer.
Yeah, so, for sure. A, a lot, a lot to do. So, with that, I, I will, again, I want to thank everybody involved in this process. It's been very good, and I appreciate the opportunity that Chairman Berry of the Election Law Committee has given to the Subcommittee for this experience. So, thank you very much, and that closes today's meeting.